Pastor of Cedar Park Presbyterian Church. She is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Marion Tasco. I would ask all guests and visitors to please rise.
Good morning.
Morning.
To the President of City Council, Mr. Darrell Clark, to Councilwoman Marion Tasco, to the District Council members and councilmen and women at large. Certainly, this is an honor and a privilege for me today to serve you by leading this council in prayer this morning. So, thank you very kindly. Would you please bow your heads with me as we go to the Lord in prayer? Almighty God, supreme ruler of all, we reverence you today and give you praise. For, Lord, it is always our first agenda item to give you glory for your presence among us. Lord, you alone know the plans that you have for us as your people, and you have the power to make them happen. And so, God, we invoke your presence in this chamber today to move among these your leaders and to impart your wisdom and your will for us unto them. Empower them even the more with your gift of discernment for decision-making as they deliberate over the tough issues and decisions and agenda items of the day. Remind them, oh God, that in the end, the answer lies with you. Lord, remind them that they serve a public trust that is beyond personal gain and glory, that no city, no community, no nation lives for itself. But, Lord, we live to carry out the responsibility for all of your people for peace, protection, provision, and for social justice. And Father, Lord, we do pray that at the end of our day, that our goal will be to ensure that this city of Philadelphia would certainly become even the more the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. Lord, it is in your name that we pray in this place today. In Jesus' name, let all of the people of God say, "Amen."
Amen.
Amen. God bless you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you for those inspiring words, Pastor. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 6, 2014. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 6, 2014 be approved.
Now, here, second.
Second.
Second, thank you. It is moved in properly, second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 6, 2014 be approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for a leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested by Councilman Heenan.
Thank you. Shall be noted. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I will dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has come down today to see your government in action. We hope that your stay here today is a pleasurable one. We hope it's so much pleasure, so much pleasure that you come back again. So, again, thank you very much for coming in today. At this time, Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny, who presented a resolution honoring St. Joe's Prep varsity football team with head coach Gabe Infante and those accompanying him with the councilman. And those accompanying him, please join the councilman at the podium.
Mr. President, it's been our prep tradition here to invite someone from another school to help read our championship resolutions.
Absolutely.
And we've chosen Councilman Squilla out of Bishop Newman High School. Now, St. John Newman, St. Regretty, so come on up and help us.
And joining the aforementioned Councilman Squilla, we have Councilman Greenlee and Councilman Brian O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution honoring the St. Joseph's Preparatory School varsity football team on winning the PIAAA 4A state championship, the District 12 4A city championship, and the Philadelphia Catholic League championship. Whereas, on Friday, November 8, 2013, the St. Joseph's Prep Hawks defeated archrival LaSalle College High School 30 to 20. Can we get you on that? Yeah. To win the Philadelphia Catholic League 4A championship. And on Saturday, November 16, 2013, the Hawks took down the Pioneers from Frankfurt High School by a score of 10 to 7, giving St. Joe's Prep its first football city title since the series was restarted in 2008. And...
Whereas, St. Joe's Prep advanced to the 4A state championship game where they soundly defeated the Vikings of Pittsburgh Central Catholic by a score of 35 to 10 in snowy conditions on Saturday, December 14, 2013, at Hershey Park Stadium. The Prep trailed 10-7 at halftime before reeling off 28 unanswered points in the second half to secure their first 4A state championship. Whereas, the St. Joe's Prep coach, Gabe Infante, was named the Coach of the Year by the Philadelphia Daily News and the Pennsylvania Football Writers Association for Division 4A.
Whereas, and I know the prep guy's always wanted another person, had a hard time reading coming up here, but the last time we did this, Councilman Kenny had a hard time with championships, so I'm glad to see now that the prep was able to do that. So, congratulations. Whereas, four members of St. Joe Prep varsity football team were honored and members of the Pennsylvania 4A football all-state team selected by the Pennsylvania Football News. And whereas, quarterback Chris Martin was named the Inquirer and Daily News Player of the Year. Eight members of St. Joe's Prep team were named to the Inquirer All Southeastern P.A. team, including Martin, offensive lineman John Daniel Runyon, and defensive back John Reed, who were all made to the first team. And also, three members from my neighborhood that were on St. Joe's Prep team, Eddie Mooney, Edward Manner, and Joe Dumont. Just wanted to throw them out there. Let it be known.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that council do hereby honor and commend the St. Joseph's Prep Hawks varsity football team on winning the PIAAA 4A state championship, the District 12 4A city championship, and the Philadelphia Catholic League championship. Further resolved, and a gross copy of this resolution represented to head coach Gabriel Infante and the members of the St. Joseph's Prep football team as an evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Congratulations.
And Chair recognizes Coach Infante for remarks.
It's a great honor to be able to bring that trophy back to eastern Pennsylvania and obviously the southeastern part of the state. It's a great honor. Thank you for taking the time to honor these great young men and a great institution. Very proud to represent the city, and we're very grateful for the time and the effort that everyone's taken in recognizing the efforts of great young men. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Let me first say thank you to Jo Mead of the Philadelphia Museum of Art and Jennifer Francis, who serves as the Museum Director of Marketing and Communications at the Philadelphia Museum of Art. This morning, I had a distinct, and let me say thank you to members who were able to come by earlier this morning for a small reception in honor of our special guest. But she first visited with us when my colleague, Councilman Good's father was mayor, W. Wilson Good, and Councilman Lucian Blackwell occupied these chambers. The one distinction about her extraordinary career is that she has 50,000 followers on Twitter. So, she has really mastered this social media world. She is one of 650 members of the House of Commons there with the British Parliament, and she has the distinction of being the first woman of 110 women in the British Parliament. Pleased to welcome and salute Madam Diane Abbott to the Philadelphia City Council. I want to ask Councilwoman Blackwell and Councilman Good to take a picture with her just to celebrate a piece of history. If we could please welcome Madam Diane Abbott. Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sargent of Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Road Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 130901, 130902, 130920, 130946, 130948, 130950, 130907, and 130908. And I am pleased to advise you that on February 19, 2014, I signed all the bills that were passed by council at a session on February 6, 2014, except bill number 130688A, and that I am hereby returning as disapproved, bill number 130701AA, which was passed by the council on January 30, 2014. And I am transmitting, for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal portion of the Cecilby Moore Avenue or Manulov area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1725 through 27 Cecilby Moore Avenue and 1735 Cecilby Moore Avenue. And also, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal portion of the Point Breeze or Manulov area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1734 Federal Street, 1606 Latona Street, 1624 Latona Street, 1637 Latona Street, 1713 Manthon Street, 1715 Manthon Street, 1717 Manthon Street, 1721 Manthon Street, 1726 Manthon Street, and 1231 South 17th Street. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development a parcel of land commonly known as 147 Gay Street for further conveyance. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the city plan and vacating certain subsurface portions of 15th Street between Arch Street and John F. Kennedy Boulevard, 16th Street between Arch Street and Cuthbert Street, and Arch Street from 16th Street to a point east of 15th Street. And an ordinance amending chapter 9600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses by clarifying penalties for violations of section 9622 entitled cigarettes and tobacco products by adding a new section to prohibit sales of electronic smoking devices and unapproved nicotine delivery products to minors. And an ordinance amending chapter 10600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Places Prohibited Conduct by adding a new section to prohibit the use of electronic smoking devices in public places and in the workplace. And an ordinance constituting the 17 supplemental ordinance to the Restated General Water and Wastewater Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989 is supplemented, authorizing the bond committee to issue and sell one or more series or sub-series of tax-exempt or taxable water and wastewater revenue bonds, all under certain terms and conditions.
Mr. Decker, do you have any additional messages?
I have received a letter dated February 18, 2014, from the Honorable Councilman Bill Green to the Honorable Darrell Clark, City Council President. Dear Council President Clark and councilmembers, I am writing to notify you that I am resigning my office as Philadelphia City Councilman at Large effective immediately. My resignation will take effect this day, February 18, 2014. It has been an honor to serve the people of Philadelphia as their councilman, and I look forward to continuing this service through my new responsibilities at the SRC. Serving with you and the rest of council has been the most rewarding experience of my professional life. I leave council in good hands. As Chair of the SRC, my door will be open to you and our council colleagues. I look forward to working closely with council to ensure that every child in Philadelphia has access to a quality education. Respectfully yours, signed, William J. Green, the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance amending title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Miscellaneous by adding a new chapter, 212700 entitled Firefighters and Fire Service Paramedics Bill of Rights that adopts minimum standards to protect the rights of uniformed fire personnel, including but not limited to firefighters and fire service paramedics beyond departmental procedures in order to ensure equality and fairness of treatment among such personnel.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Miscellaneous by adding a new chapter, 212800 entitled Fire Service Paramedic Safety and Health by adopting minimum standards to protect the health, safety, and dignity of uniformed Philadelphia Fire Department personnel working as fire service paramedics.
That bill will also be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code by amending Subcode F of the Philadelphia Fire Code by delineating the process to be utilized by the Philadelphia Fire Department in its consideration of temporary or permanent reductions or eliminations of fire companies that provide life safety and property protection from the hazards of fire, explosion, or dangerous conditions.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution in recognition of Black History Month remembering the Pullman Porters, the Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters, and A. Philip Randup as the leaders of the nation's first predominantly African-American labor union.
That resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resi...
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer four bills, two on your behalf, and one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance amending chapter 10600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Places Prohibited Conduct by adding a new section to prohibit the use of electronic smoking devices in public places and in the workplace.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending chapter 9600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses by clarifying penalties for violations of section 9622 entitled cigarettes and tobacco products and by adding a new section to prohibit sales of electronic smoking devices and unapproved nicotine delivery products to minors.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the city plan and vacating certain subsurface portions of 15th Street between Arch Street and John F. Kennedy Boulevard, 16th Street between Arch Street and Cuthbert Street, and Arch Street from 16th Street to a point east of 15th Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by creating a new Spring Garden NCA overlay district in the area bounded by Spring Garden Street, Broad Street, Callahill Street, and 18th Street and prohibiting personal credit establishments within the district.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying additional fees, simple titles, certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situate in the 16th and 29th wards of the city of Philadelphia.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasco.
Mr. President, I offer one bill on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance constituting the 17 supplemental ordinance to the Restated General Water and Wastewater Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989 is supplemented, authorizing the bond committee to issue and sell one or more series or sub-series of tax-exempt or taxable water and wastewater revenue bonds.
That bill will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill that focuses on the development of affordable housing units in the Point Breeze community and also three resolutions, sir.
A non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal portion of the Point Breeze or Manulov area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1734 Federal Street, 1606, 1624, 1637, and 1637 Latona Street, 1713, 1715, 1717, 1721, and 1726 Manthon Street, and 1231 South 17th Street.
That resolution will be on next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the United States Congress to pass Senate Bill 1410 entitled The Smarter Sentencing Act, which provides for fairer drug sentencing guidelines.
That resolution will also be on next week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and commending the southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority on its 15th anniversary for its extraordinary service and dedication to the city of Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and commending the City of Philadelphia Mural Arts Program on its 30th anniversary for its extraordinary service and dedication as a component of the Philadelphia Anti-Graffiti Network.
And that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McKeon Assentia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying additional fees, simple titles, certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situate in the 7th, 19th, 31st, and 37th wards of the city of Philadelphia.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Counselman. Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance amending chapter 171300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage and Benefits Standard by further providing with respect to the membership of a Living Wage and Benefits Review Committee.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution amending resolution number 110807 adopted November 17, 2011, which provided for the appointment of a five-person living wage and benefits review committee pursuant to section 171311 of the Philadelphia Code by specifying two additional organizations authorized to make appointments to the committee.
Counselman, you want that to go to committee? Just direct vote? Next one? That will be on next week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill, one privileged resolution, and two non-privileged resolutions. The non-privileged resolution is on behalf of Councilman Heenan to amend the demolition bill, which is a technical amendment on, not a substantive amendment. The change is in the effective date of the bill. The amendments have been circulated to all members of council, and I wish to be recognized after the title to recall the resolution is read for a motion to recall the bill.
Okay. It's a recall?
And ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter relating to the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of a DHS community oversight board and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arrangements for the special election.
That resolution will be referred to committee.
And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter to establish an independent community oversight board for the Department of Human Services and to provide for the board's appointment, powers, and duties and providing for the submission of the amendment to the qualified electors of Philadelphia.
And that also will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution proclaiming and designating the week of April 6, 2014 as Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week to encourage citizens to assist crime victims and to increase community awareness and support for the organizations that help crime victims rebuild their lives.
And that will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution requesting the mayor to return to council bill number 130688A entitled an ordinance amending title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding new rules and obligations pertaining to construction licenses and renewals of those licenses, creating demolition licenses and increasing fines for expeditors that falsify information for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
And that will be on today's calendar. Want to do it now? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Been moved in properly, second, all those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution will be considered on today's calendar. that resolution will be considered on today's calendar. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one nonprivileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades of a portion of City Plan Number 308 by striking from the city plan and vacating Cypress Street from Broad Street to Watch Street and reserving and placing on the city plan a right-of-way for various utility purposes.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying additional fees simple titled certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 31st ward of the city of Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on next week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two privileged resolutions. One, co-sponsored by Councilman Greenlee and Councilman Jones, the other by Councilman Bass and Councilman Jones. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing March 9th to March 15th of 2014 as Glaucoma Awareness Week in the city of Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution declaring May 2014 as Hepatitis Awareness Month in Philadelphia to recognize and support the joint efforts of hep-B United Philadelphia and hepatitis-C Allies of Philadelphia, coalitions aimed at raising the profile of viral hepatitis as an urgent local health priority.
And that resolution will also be on today's final passage calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next scheduled event will be reports from the committee. And Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, would you please read that report?
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, to which is referred Bill Number 130908, entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Spruce Street, Juniper Street, Cypress Street, Watch Street, Pine Street, and Broad Street by amending Chapter 14-500 of the zoning code entitled Overlay Zoning, by amending Chapter 14-700 of the zoning code entitled Development Standards, and by amending Chapter 14-800 of the zoning code entitled Parking and Loading. Respectfully reports that is considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 130908.
Thank you. It has been moved in property. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit reading this day of Bills Number 130908. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose. Ayes have it, and those bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee of Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Property and Public Works reports five bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please read that report?
The Committee on Public Property and Public Works, to which is referred Bill Number 130901, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Enter into a Declaration of Rights, Easements, Covenants, and Restrictions to Government Relationship Among: (1) That certain parcel of land together with the improvements thereon, commonly known as JFK Plaza, located at 15th and Arch Streets; (2) That certain parcel of land together with the improvements located thereon, commonly known as Love Park Parking Garage, located generally beneath JFK Plaza at 15th and Arch Streets; and (3) Certain parcels of land around and beneath Love Park Parking Garage. And Bill Number 130902, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver a Deed Convoying Fee Simple Title to a Certain Parcel of Land Together with the Improvements Located Thereon, Commonly Known as Love Park Parking Garage, Located Generally Beneath JFK Plaza at 15th and Arch Streets, Together with Certain Rights and Obligations of the Owner of the Love Park Parking Garage Unit Under a Certain Declaration of Rights, Easements, Covenants, and Restrictions. And Bill Number 130946, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Publish from the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development a Certain tract of land together with the improvements thereon situated in the area bounded by 46th Street, Market Street, Haverford Avenue, and 48th Street, known as 4601 Market Street. And Bill Number 140057, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Enter into a Lease Agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority to Lease From the City of Philadelphia, the premise is commonly known as the Chalfont Recreation Center, for Further Sublease. And Bill Number 140058, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Enter into a Lease Agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority to Lease From the City of Philadelphia, the premise is commonly known as the Junod Recreation Center, for Further Sublease, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports that is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Numbers 130946, 140057, and 140058.
Thank you. It has been moved in property. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 130946, 140057, and 140058. All those in favor say aye. Those oppose. Ayes have it, and those bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Bills Number 130901 and 130902 will be placed on our first reading calendar at our next session of council. We will now have special business. We will proceed under a special order of business today and motion that council reconsider the vote by which Bill Number 130701AA was passed. This bill was passed by council at its January 30th, 2014 session, and was returned as disapproved by the mayor at today's council session. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of that bill?
Bill Number 130701AA, entitled An Ordinance Providing for the Submission of the Qualified Electors of the City of Philadelphia of an Amendment to the Philadelphia Homeworld Charter to Permit City-Elected Officials to Become Candidates for Nomination or Election to Public Office Without First Resigning from Their City Office, under Certain Terms and Conditions, Fixing the Date of a Special Election for Such Purpose, Prescribing the Form of Ballot Question to Be Voted On, and Authorizing the Appropriate Officers to Publish Notice and to Make Arrangements for the Special Election.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O.
I move that the council reconsider Bill Number 13071AA, which was approved by City Council on January 30th, 2014.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose? The motion carries, and Bill Number 130701AA will be reconsidered at the end of today's calendar. The next order of business is to consideration of the calendar, and I note that the bills just reported from committee have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading on our final passage calendar at our next council session. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 140086, 130861, 130744A, 130851, 130852, and 120387. All of the resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar, we will have our public comment session. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or a resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, I ask that you please sign up to the table at my left. When your name is called, you will come up to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There is a device on that podium. There is a light on that device. When that device, the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When it light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when it turns red, we will ask that you please conclude your remarks. And we ask that you please adhere to those guidelines. Mr. Decker, would you please read the name of the first individual?
Mingo Strober. Commenting on 130851, 130852, and 130861.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Mingo Strober. I'm an attorney in Philadelphia. I spent many years as a public defender. I worked for the family court in Philadelphia, and I'm a sole practitioner here in the city of Philadelphia, largely representing indigent people who are accused of crimes, juvenile delinquency acts, and are engaged in the dependency court process. I'm here to make public comments in support of the legislation 1308512 and 130861. I became involved in this process last year when it was revealed that the city of Philadelphia was planning to float an RFP to change the way in which indigent people were represented by lawyers in Philadelphia in delinquency, dependency, and criminal cases. As you probably know, normally the public defender's office represents poor people who cannot afford lawyers, but in cases of conflict, there is a cadre of lawyers who are private lawyers who accept court appointments and handle the representation of poor people who cannot afford their own lawyers. The city's plan was very problematic in the private bar's view, and eventually we were thrilled to hear that Councilman O'Brien and Greenlee were holding hearings to look into this matter. The hearings revealed, and all of the people who testified at them testified in opposition to the plan that the city proposed, and I believe that these resolutions come out of that experience. In courthouses all over the land, we see the words "equal justice under the law." The sad reality is that for poor people, people who cannot afford lawyers, it is not often the case that they actually have equal justice under the law. So it's important that in a situation where the city is planning to dramatically change the way in which people who are poor are represented, that city council be involved in overseeing this, especially when very important constitutional rights are implicated. So these bills go a large measure to support that. There needs to be oversight. City council should be letting the public know what is going on with respect to this. There are ABA standards and other standards that we need to ensure are incorporated into any contract that the city engages in when it comes to the representation of the most vulnerable of our citizens. I would encourage city council, therefore, to support these bills. I should also add that we do have, as I said, a cadre of lawyers who handle these cases. We do a very good job, but I wish that the city would provide more financial support for this kind of very important representation of our most vulnerable. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are none of the speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Now consider the bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of 140086?
A resolution supporting the Repair America Movement, which seeks to prioritize infrastructure investment, which will create quality jobs, boost the economy, and ensure that communities are safe and healthy, and urging our federal legislators to support this initiative.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those oppose. Ayes have it. Resolution 140086 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 130861.
A resolution proposing amendment to the Philadelphia Homeworld Charter to provide that council approval is required for certain contracts for one year or less for the purpose of providing legal representation and related services for indigent persons, including but not limited to parents and children who are subjects of dependency proceedings, criminal defendants, persons in juvenile justice proceedings, persons involved in behavioral health proceedings, and indigent persons involved in other proceedings where legal representation is required as a matter of law by court order.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Resolution 130861 is a proposed amendment to the Homeworld Charter, so we will require a two-thirds vote. The Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution and would like to be recognized for a few brief remarks.
It's been moved in property. Second, Councilman, please make your remarks now.
Thank you, Mr. President. The right to counsel is a fundamental procedural safeguard guaranteed under the Bill of Rights to all persons accused of a crime who are unable to afford a lawyer. In the landmark case, Gideon versus Wainwright, the U.S. Supreme Court recognized the fundamental role that legal representation plays in a fair criminal justice system. On November 14th, 2013, I introduced with co-sponsor Councilman Greenlee a three-piece package of legislation regarding indigent representation, which is not limited to criminal counsel, but also extends to dependency cases. They were recently referred out of committee and are before all of council today. The first two pieces of legislation are a change to the Philadelphia Homeworld Charter. Bill Number 130851 is the ballot question and resolution. 130861 is the accompanying resolution. Currently, Section 2-309 of the Charter titled Leases and Contracts states, "The council may by ordinance authorize the leasing of real estate for more than one year and the contracting for personal property to be supplied, or for services to be rendered over a period of more than one year. As a result, city council has no authority to review contracts that the administration enters into when the length of the contract is for one year or less." I do not believe that every contract should require city council approval. However, I do strongly believe that any contract dealing with an individual's constitutional rights is important enough to require council approval. I understand that amending the Homeworld Charter is not an action to be taken lightly, but these contracts are of such importance that an exception to the charter is not only required, but is in the best interest of the city. The right to counsel is a constitutionally protected right. The contract that the administration eventually plans to issue, an RFP for and sign, deals directly with this constitutionally protected right. The charter amendment will not prohibit the administration from entering into a contract. It will just require a public forum to be able to review the contract and get the answers before any contract is signed. Without this legislation, there is zero public input. My proposed narrow amendment to the charter requires that all contracts for rendering of services for a year or less that involve the expenditures of more than $100,000, for the purpose of providing legal representation and related services for the indigent, may only be made when permitted by ordinance. This provision applies to the contracts, renewals, and extensions. In order to make the amendment as narrow as possible so as not to open the floodgates of council approval for every contract, I did the following. One, put a monetary threshold for over, for every contract over $100,000. Two, specifically state that this amendment only applies to contracts dealing with the legal representation of the indigent, and the monetary amount is necessary to make sure that only large contracts are considered. As a result, this excludes individual private attorneys who are currently providing legal representation to the indigent by being court-appointed conflict counsel. However, the monetary amount includes the Philadelphia Defenders Association, Support Center for Child Advocates, Community Legal Services. Because these organizations have been successfully contracted with the city for many years, they are exempt from the review requirement unless council provides an ordinance to the contrary. The third piece of legislation, Bill Number 130852, is an ordinance that requires audits of the law firm or entity that the city enters into a contract with for the representation of the indigent. There are two audits, a financial audit and a quality control audit. The financial audit is standard and encompasses what council already asks of many other departments during the budget process. The quality control audit will be performed by an independent auditor who is familiar with indigent defense systems and the Philadelphia criminal justice system. The legislative intent behind this ordinance is to make sure that the level of representation for the indigent is up to the national standards. Many of these quality controls are prescribed and recommended by the American Bar Association. I believe we are ensuring that Philadelphia lives up to those standards and principles in every aspect of our indigent defense delivery system. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen. Mr. Decker, would you, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Decker, would you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Corinna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and nays are zero. Majority of all members of council haven't voted in the affirmative. The resolution passes. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title 130744A?
An ordinance amending Chapter 17-1300 of the Philadelphia Code and titled Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage and Benefits Standard by further providing with respect to the granting and revocation of waivers of the requirements of the chapter.
Chair recognizes Councilman Good. I'm sorry. It's a bill. All right. This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrada Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in the affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker. Please read the title 130851.
An ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide that council approval is required for certain contracts for one year or less for the purpose of providing legal representation and related services for indigent persons.
Thank you. This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrada Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and nays are 0. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 130852.
An ordinance amending title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by establishing reporting and auditing requirements for certain contracts for conflicts counsel for indigent individuals.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrada Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and nays are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. And Mr. Decker, 120387.
An ordinance amending section 17, 109 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Local Bidding Preferences by adjusting the local bidding preference for city contracts.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrada Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and nays are 0. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative, the bill passes. We will now move to the veto override on bill number... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Decker. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions? It seems like I'm anxious to get to this veto override. Sorry.
A resolution in recognition of Black History Month, remembering the Pullman Porters, the Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters, and A. Philip Randolph as the leaders of the nation's first predominantly African-American labor union, introduced by Councilman Kenny.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Adopted the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring, recognizing, and commending the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority on its 50th anniversary for its extraordinary service and dedication to the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring, recognizing, and commending the City of Philadelphia Mural Arts Program on its 30th anniversary for its extraordinary service and dedication as a component of the Philadelphia Anti-Graffiti Network, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I also want to acknowledge that resolution is sponsored by Councilman Mark Squilla as well. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution proclaiming and designating the week of April 6, 2014, as Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week to encourage citizens to assist crime victims and to increase community awareness and support for the organizations that help crime victims rebuild their lives, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution requesting the mayor to return to council, bill number 130688A, entitled an ordinance amending title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding new rules and obligations pertaining to construction licenses and renewals of those licenses, creating demolition licenses and increasing fines for expeditors that falsify information for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council. Introduced by Councilman Jones for Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilman Heenan, I move for the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this special business at this time.
It's moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Aye.
Okay. I move for its adoption.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing March 9 to March 15 of 2014 as Glaucoma Awareness Week in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring May 2014 to be Hepatitis Awareness Month in Philadelphia to recognize and support the joint efforts of hepB United Philadelphia and hepatitis C Allies of Philadelphia, coalitions aimed at raising the profile of viral hepatitis as an urgent local health priority, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now move towards the veto override on bill number 130701AA. We'll now reconsider the vote by which bill number 130701AA was passed. Mr. Decker will read the title of the bill.
Bill number 130701AA entitled an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to permit city-elected officials to become candidates for nomination or election to public office without first resigning from their city office.
This bill having been read on two different days was duly approved by our council on January... I'm sorry. Chair recognizes right now.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just have to be nostalgic a little bit. I think many of the members who've been here for a long time remember that I had a bill once in here that passed 16-0, and it would have passed 17-0 had Councilman... delayed Councilman Cohen not been in the hospital. And much... I was very happy because it passed 17 or 16-0. But the mayor, Street, at the time, he sent it back disapproved. And on the override effort, I lost 10-6. There are a couple ways you can do this. You can either sign the bill, leave it unsigned, and it becomes law, or you veto it. But then you got to work the veto. And I've never seen anybody work a veto like Mayor Street. And I remember looking at Councilman Good, and he said to me, "I'm sorry, my phone rang. I shouldn't have answered it." Just my experience here in losing a veto override. We'll see how this one goes. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm actually going to leave that alone. I'm not going to comment. I was extremely tempted. This bill having been read on two different days was duly approved by city council on January 30, 2014, and was returned to council by the mayor as disapproved at today's session of council. The question is, shall bill number 130701AA pass notwithstanding the mayor's disapproval? Please note that a vote of aye is a vote to override the mayor's veto, and a vote of nay is a vote to sustain the mayor's veto. Mr. Decker, would you please call a roll now?
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrada Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tascow.
You got to love this place.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 15, and nays are 0. Two-thirds majority of all members of council having voted in the affirmative, the mayor's veto is overridden. That completes our regular calendar for the day. We now have special business, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion regarding special business.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Mr. Decker, would you please read the letter from the mayor?
To the President and members of the council of the City of Philadelphia, I am returning here with, as requested by your resolution adopted today, bill number 130688A, entitled an ordinance amending title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding new rules and obligations pertaining to construction licenses and renewals of those licenses, creating demolition licenses and increasing fines for expeditors that falsify information for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion that council reconsidered the vote by which bill number 130688A was passed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to bill number 130688A. A copy of this amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move that the adoption of those amendments. The second A was a motion, not double A. Would you like me to read that again?
Hold on a second, counsel, please.
Oh, that... Okay.
Yeah, this move for the reconsideration vote first, and then we'll do the amendment.
Okay. I'm moving for the reconsideration and retracting the bill.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any... Nay? Any nay? Ayes have it, and the motion carries that the vote by which bill number 130688A was passed has been reconsidered. The chair again recognizes Councilman Jones. Now, Councilman, do the amendment now.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to bill number 130688A. A copy of this amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for its adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. It has been moved in property, seconded, that the amendment to bill number 130688A be adopted. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and bill number 130688A has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passes calendar at our next session of council. This concludes our special business. Now, are there any speeches on the part of the minority? And there being none, are there any speeches on the part of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, and all members of council, I want you to listen very closely. And did you hear that? That is the absence of a voice of one of our members, Councilman Bill Green, who, out of all of the members here, none of them is going through more separation anxiety than Councilman Kenny. He is totally despondent about this. And I want you to pay close attention to him going forward. On a serious note, it is a... It is a voice that will be missed. Whether you talk about Councilman Green from his early days and authoring part of the Freshman 15 that was dismissed by many and now implemented by most of government, whether you talk about his work with Maria Peñones Sanchez, Councilwoman, on tax policy, whether you talk about his bold, often misunderstood comments as it related to public education, whether you talk about his paperless government idea, whether you talk about free Wi-Fi for all or putting in a lawsuit to keep our libraries open during the dark crisis of our budget situation. This is a man, this is a councilman, who added value to this body. And for me, one, he will be truly missed. We know he will go on to create great controversy wherever he goes, but he will be missed as value-added in this body. And speaking for myself in the fourth district, which he also represent, we will miss him. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
I'd just like to remind my colleagues that the Utility Emergency Services Fund will host a briefing today at noon time in the caucus room to discuss income services for our veterans who are low-income or who are homeless, and we invite you to come, and lunch will be served. You know, the Utility Emergency Service Fund is an active fund that provides services to people who are in need of utility services. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Very important issue. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just take a moment today and recognize Temple University, and recognize Temple University and a new initiative that they have flying for. And I know that, Mr. President, you and I share Temple University's campus, whether it be the main campus or the medical campus, and know how important it is to make sure that our young people have every opportunity to graduate in four years. Those additional years make it much more unlikely that some of our students will actually be able to receive their degree from Temple or from any institution. And so I just really wanted to take a moment and say thanks to Temple and to all the other local universities that are pitching in to make sure that our young people really do have an opportunity to get their degree. What this program does is provides an additional $4,000 in annual grants that'll be to 500 students who demonstrate need in each incoming class, so they can focus less on working and more on finishing their degrees. So again, I just wanted to applaud Temple. I know that Councilman Greenlee and I are the Temple University caucus here in council, and they just do a great job, and I want to encourage them to keep providing such resources for our young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Peñones Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to join my freshman colleague, Curtis, in saying that Bill will be missed. Caught myself cleaning his desk over here, wondering what I'm going to do over here without him. Bill is a very special person to me personally. I affectionately know him as Guiyo, and over time learned to appreciate his energy. And as someone who debated him probably the most than anybody in this room privately and in our discussions around policy, I really learned to respect his perspective and actually have come to count on it. He's taken on a big challenge as the SRC chairman. His selection by the governor and then his confirmation from the Senate has led to much debate. I want to congratulate him and wish him well, and hope that with the appointment of his colleague who joins him, Farah Jimenez, we have a full SRC. Just this week and just yesterday, Dr. Hyde put forth his bold plan for public education and his public request for $320 million. There's a lot of discussion that will happen over the next few months, but we have just begun this debate around the plan and the money. So we know what the vision is, and we know what the ask is. Bill will be charged with the fiscal oversight, the policy development, and the ensuring of a public, transparent decision process from all stakeholders about what the future of public education in the City of Philadelphia. But he is not the taxing authority. It is us here in this council, the governor, the state legislature, and the federal government who have the responsibility, some of us will say the moral obligation, to ensure that we have adequate funding at the school district. I look forward to many, many debates with my colleague and my friend, Bill Green, as this year we make critical decisions about the future of public education in the City of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd first like to... I'd first like to thank Councilman Jones for pointing out the separation anxiety issue because I've been a bit teary lately, and I couldn't put my finger on what it was. So I thank him for that. In all seriousness, I want to wish Bill Green, new chairman of the SRC, well along with Farah Jimenez and the whole body. They're going to have to do a good job in order for this to get done, and we're going to have to help them get that job done. And Harrisburg is going to have to help them also. So I'm committed to doing that and wishing them all well. I really like Dr. Height. And I really have come to... I tried to avoid him in the beginning because I didn't want to be disappointed again. And the more I got to know him and the more I got to talk with him, I really do think he's the perfect person for this spot. So since we have him there, the SRC in full, us here, I'm confident that we can get something really specially done for our kids in the coming years. So I wish them all well, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a brief announcement. On Tuesday, February 25, I will be sponsoring a senior appreciation... Senior Citizens Appreciation Lunch working in partnership with State Representative Maria Donatucci from 11:30 to 2:30 at St. Richards Catholic Church located at 18th and Pollock Street in South Philadelphia. This is part of our Senior Citizens Outreach Initiative where we're focusing on bringing quality, not only constituent services to our seniors, but also acknowledging them for their time and dedication to their families. Just want to make that announcement. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. And Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I'm going out of turn, but I was thinking about what Councilman Kenny said, and I just wanted to kind of air this thought. We are politicians. I know it's a bad word, but we are politicians. I think Mayor Street was very comfortable with the fact that he was a politician, and he used his abilities and skills to advance the agenda that he had. There is a saying, "It is better to be than to seem," in Latin. And I think that for 60 years, Philadelphia has had resigned to run. It is the illusion that we, as politicians, are a step above everyone else in ethics when we are not. And in fact, what it does do is it makes us a step below everyone else in actual power and ability to get things done on behalf of the people that we serve. In this body, I get schooled every day in the world of politics by people who are masterful politicians, and I appreciate what I'm learning. I think it is a shame that our city cannot harness the political abilities, acumen, and experience of these people as well as our district attorney, our commissioners, our sheriff, and our mayor. So at a luncheon a couple days ago or yesterday for the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce, the mayor called out to all businesspeople and all people in Philadelphia to go with him to Harrisburg. Well, all these people don't live in the districts of the people who represent the rest of the Commonwealth. And if we would elevate Philadelphia at least to the same level of every other political body in this state, I believe the mayor would be more effective in Harrisburg in getting those funds, in getting the things that we need here in Philadelphia, and in our ability and our state representatives and federal elected officials to represent the people of this city. It is better to be and be good at what we are supposed to be than to carry an illusion that actually makes us less effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I want to thank my colleague, the Majority Leader. That's why he's the leader, Councilman Jones, for making the correction. So the event will be at St. Richards Catholic Church, 18th and Pollock Street in South Philadelphia. Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Yeah, much-needed correction. We would hate to see people... See people showing up at a place where there's no food. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Before we call for Councilwoman Brown to adjourn, I'd just like to concur with my colleagues about Councilman Green. He was a... Some people would say a very interesting councilperson. He came to this body on fire, taking on the world, you know, and realized it was a pretty big world.